Test one two, check an audio for Katz broadcast.
Test one two, check an audio for Katz broadcast.
I call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissions.
Right. Is there any other department that has an update? You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great. Thank you so very much. Next, we will move on to department updates. I cannot see who we have from the Health Department. Ah, Ms. Kelly's here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a few updates for you today. The emergency room visits for COVID-like illnesses have slightly increased over the last week. However, wastewater detections are still low at this time. The Health Department is now able to provide quick-for-life tobacco cessation referrals. You can call 812-349-2150 for more information. And as always, we have vaccines available through our public health clinic. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Githens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it. All right. Is there any other department that has an update? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. We do have a department update, and Commissioner Githens will deliver it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask TSD to put the spreadsheet up that was sent on to you. There's been a lot of discussion for months now about the location of the new jail. And so I'm a numbers person. I like to think in numbers. And I put together this spreadsheet with as much information as I could to help us make a decision about the location. So you notice I looked at three sites because we know that Hopewell is completely off the board at this point, as are anything else that we even remotely considered. When you look at the purchase price, we know that the county already owns the Thompson location, but there are a lot of other costs that come along with trying to use Thompson. And so I went down through different things. You can see what assumptions I've made here. If we were to try to go with Fullerton, we would need to have it rezoned. That could take up to another year. And that could incur a cost of up to $10 million just to wait. And we don't know if that, in fact, would be approved. If it's not, then we're back to stage one with where we go looking at things. But delaying, according to our folks that actually build jails and other facilities, cost goes up about 5% a year right now for building. It varies a bit, but that's sort of the current average. So if we're looking at a $200 million, both jail and justice campus, that would indicate that a delay of one year would incur an additional cost of $10 million, which would bring the total cost of that location to over $20 million. I did the same thing with the Thompson property. Now, we would need to purchase a small additional property there for about $1 million. We would need to remove a huge debris mound that could cost $5 million to remove. We would probably have to pay over $1 million to have high-voltage lines rerouted. And before we could even do that, we would have to have a plan approved by Duke, which, again, it may or may not be approved, which would delay at least by two and a half years. That means that the cost would increase by 25 million, so that even if we were to use a property that we already own, just the property and the delays would cost us over $32 million additional. We've also been looking at an area in North Park. Right now, the price that we're potentially looking at is over $11 million. There are no additional problems that could come along, I don't think, with North Park in terms of substantial delays. Yes, there might be another month or two as we look at things, but I think that that, in my mind, is the least costly in terms of what we're looking at overall. And so I've tried to put those numbers together to show what that would mean. Now, this spreadsheet assumes that the jail and the justice campus will be co-located. This is in keeping with the recommendations from both Sheriff Marte and with Presiding Judge Mary Ellen DeKoff. It assumes that the overall cost of building a new jail in the justice campus will be $200 million. I know that this is a staggering amount of money, but as I've said, delaying will only increase the cost. And delaying co-location will incur the cost of renovating the current justice building and of additional jail staff and vehicles. Delaying or foregoing co-location decreases the overall safety of the jail staff and of the general public. And I think that needs to be part of our considerations, too, that safety is part of this decision-making. And then also, the goal is to begin the design and building of a new jail and justice campus in a way that will minimize costs while maintaining public safety. So if, sorry, we need to figure out where it's going. We can't move forward without it. We can't move forward on the design. We can't move forward on other things. Now, last Thursday, Sheriff Marte and his staff did a presentation before the County Council and the County Commissioners titled "Understanding Functional Jail Capacity." I thought it was extremely well done. I really appreciated the kind of exercise that they put people through to discuss things. And I came away with that meeting with two strong impressions. First, that a 400-bed jail would be too small for future needs, and that we need to move forward on building a new jail now. We cannot continue to put this off. The sheriff has also said multiple times that he thought we should build a 500-bed facility. And recently, the assessment from our QAW also recommended a 500-bed facility, all in keeping. It's time to make a decision. We can't keep putting this off. So I think it's time to move forward. I think it's time to make a decision on this, and I hope that we can work with our County Council colleagues to get something done expeditiously, and that we can move forward. At this point, I think that North Park is the most reasonable location for what we need to have done.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. It always helps to see the numbers. So thank you for that, including the cost of inflation. Commissioner Jones, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes. Another couple numbers. The population of Monroe County is predicted to grow by 17% a year, and the jail population stays at the same level, no matter how much our population goes up. I believe that was about 2.7% of our population tends to get jailed. I don't, I think our judges do a really good job of trying to avoid jailing people or trying to get them out as quickly as they can be. But in the end, with a growing population, it's just not realistic to expect a jail of 400 beds to continue to work for our community, which just means that we're kicking the can down the road. And before long, other elected officials are going to have to try to deal with a jail that's too small.
May I add also that my thinking on this has really been changed?
Yes.
Initially, when we started to look at this, and as we toured other facilities, I was not in favor of this size of a jail. But after hearing what I consider very reasonable presentations, after understanding how you cannot mix certain populations within a facility, I support the sheriff's efforts at this point.
Yeah. And I'll just note as well, just as a sort of an asterisk on this discussion, is if we say, you know, 500 beds, that sounds like an awful lot. And it is, but that's not what they call the functional space, because you do have to have the capacity to address the various levels of violation. You have to have, you have to address safety concerns for those who are incarcerated. You have to address and provide safe space for people who don't necessarily have a, have a gender identity that's different than their biological identity. We have to ensure that if somebody is injured or sick, that they are cared for. And so this is not a functional number. It is the total space. I think I was, for a very long time, focused on building a larger shell in a smaller facility, meaning fewer cells. But the issue with that is that if we find that we need more cells, and we still are, you know, we're paying down a bond from jail tax and other taxes to pay for the jail, then how do we afford additional cells? I mean, that's, that's a huge issue, right? And so we would, we would be in stasis for, you know, 20 years potentially. So I think that's another, another concern.
And even with that, you have to build the HVAC system, the kitchen, the laundry, all to fit that bigger facility. You can't just keep adding to those as well. I think another thing that struck me last week during the presentation by the sheriff and his staff was they said, if you have two or more defendants from the same case, you cannot house them in the same block. That had never occurred to me before. And so this is another reason why you have to have those different blocks available for housing folks. And even with our current facility, with the way things were described, it takes a lot of extra staff just to move people around from one block to another. Somebody, they have things kind of at a stasis point, and then somebody new comes in, and they have to shift things, and they have to shift things very, very quickly. And so that requires a lot of extra staff to be able to move people from one location to another.
No, I just agree with all of that. And I think it's time that we get serious and move forward.
And that's just to say that we have not yet selected a location, because we are still waiting for some more information. The Phase Two environmental report has not come in yet. And so a site has not been selected, but clearly, we're continuing to research and investigate North Park as a, as a potential site. So, and if anybody has not seen the recording of the presentation we had from the Sheriff's Department last week, I encourage you to go to our website, go to the calendar, click on that meeting, and you can see the recording. It was, what it was, was a shortened version of part of our training that we all took with the Criminal Justice Institute and Department of Justice, called the Pony Training. So that was, that's what that was. Anything else?
Isn't that enough?
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate the, the number crunching. And we will move on now to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. We're limited to three minutes per speaker. Please state your name and your county of residence. You may raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing done, we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from July 10, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
No.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for July 10, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0. And it's funny how you, you read these things, and you read them, and you read them, and then when you're saying it out loud, you're like, no, 2024. So we'll make that correction. So motion carries, 3-0, and we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of Claim Stocket Accounts Payable, July 17, 2024.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Miller?
Good morning. Excuse me. The accounts payable claim stocket for July 17, 2024 totals $1,922,997. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions from the board?
I had emailed Ms. Miller about stuff, and wow, I did not realize how expensive the hats are that the Sheriff's Department uses.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. But thank you for following up with the on that.
You're welcome.
They are expensive. Okay. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the Claim Stocket Accounts Payable, July 17, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-0. We don't have any reports today, so we will move on to new business.
Move approval of the SRI Inc. Online Tax Sales Services Agreement. Fund name, County General. Fund number, 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Carter?
Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, you have the SRI Services Agreement to Hold the Tax Sale for the 2024 Sale Online Using Their Online Platform. This is for the sale only. The county will still complete noticing, title searching, tax collection, bidder registration, and verifications. SRI's fees are $20 per parcel that is offered in the sale. That is paid from County General, unappropriated. It's paid from a tax sales fee process, and that is for all certified parcels. This fee covers the SRI fees as well as other miscellaneous costs to the county. This agreement did have one change from the years prior, so everything was the same, except that the agreement will auto-renew annually unless within 30 days of renewal, SRI or the county decides to provide written notice of intent. So this year, we currently have our tax sale scheduled for Thursday, October 3. We have 114 certified properties in the sale, and the list will be posted online and in the Herald Times. Bidders, bidders can register online, September 3 through September 27. And last year, we had 114 certified properties and got down to about 31 properties sold. So, or offered in the sale. So that's, that's our agreement.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
Not really. I know that you've used this group in the past, and things seem to have gone pretty smoothly. Yeah.
And just to be clear, we, we have to pay SRI initially because they're doing the title search and all of those, those steps. And then they get paid back. We get the money back.
We do the title searching.
We do the searching. Okay.
They just are essentially hosting the sale for us.
Okay. So they're putting the sale together. They're not doing any of that legal work. Okay. I was gonna say, that's really a bargain.
And he still does that.
Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you so much. But we do recover those fees from the buyers.
Yes.
Of the parcels. Great. Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. See, I'm glad I, just to be clear, for me, thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing done, all those in favor- Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the SRI Inc. Online Tax Sales Services Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much. Excited.
Move approval of the addendum to the Bluestone Storm Debris Removal. Fund name, County General. Emergency Management. Fund number, 1,000. And this is for an additional $80,000, so it would bring the amount up so it does not exceed $130,000 presently. And I'd also like to amend this to authorize Commissioner Thomas as the board president to increase the amount with council appropriation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Purdy.
I appreciate all the hard work that it took to organize this. And it's such an important thing. It's not something we've done before. You know, I know we've provided bins and, and rollaways and things like that when we've had tornado damage, but this is a first, and I just appreciate, appreciate the work that went into organizing it and ensuring that people are aware of it and can sign up. So folks can still sign up.
Actually, Ms. Purdy, would you take him down?
Aye.
But the claim at this point in time is for...
Yeah, I, it's wonderful that that's on the website, and it might be good to put a note on the homepage that the signup is gone, but, and, and for folks who do have tree limbs, branches, I would say limbs, not branches, because obviously we want the bigger stuff because they're usually in that grappling hook. We will encourage you to get that debris into the right of way so it can be picked up. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Is there a chance that any of this will be reimbursed through FEMA?
Commissioner Jones? Comments, questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the addendum to Bluestone Storm Debris Removal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-30, Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Purdy.
I think it needs to be closer to her. That's part of it.
Oh, no, it seems like this is a whole new mic now.
There you go.
All right, this is just housekeeping for us in that we have some surplus property that is from Parks and Recreation Prosecutor's Office. Parks and Rec has a couple of commercial mowers, and those will, those have a combined value of about $7,500. And the Prosecutor's Office has an L wood-shaped desk, and both of these, actually, the Ferris mowers will be available for auction, and the desk is, once it's surplus here, is going to be disposed of as it has no value.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I thought the Ferris motors were gonna be traded in at Richard Small.
They were, and if they do not sell, that is what will occur.
Got it. Perfect. Okay. Got it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item.
Move approval of Vet Environmental Engineering, Phase Two, Raid On Testing For The Courthouse. Fund name, Cumulative Capital. Fund number, 1138. In an amount of $23,787.59.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Griffith joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Alex Griffith with Monroe County Maintenance Department of the Courthouse. This agenda request is to accept the proposal for Vets Environmental Engineering LLC in the total amount of $23,787.59. This will be providing additional radon mitigation work at the Monroe County Courthouse.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I hope that this will actually take care of the issues.
Yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is something that's important to deal with. Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it, and it's good to have you at the microphone. You're always here, but it's good to have you at the microphone. So we have to come up with a really tough question for him. No, I won't. All right. Baptism, I'm clear. All right, thank you so much. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium.
Second.
Oh, wait. We've got two 2024-30s.
Nope, one's a resolution, one's an ordinance. Oh, thank you. You're safe. We're good. Okay. Yeah. We do have a motion, and we do have a second, and we do have Mr. McCray joining us today.
Good morning, commissioners. During the June 28th meeting, we brought this policy to, for, to you for your consideration. It was approved, and then it was submitted to the prosecutor and Board of Judges for approval, and both agreed that this should be implemented. Since then, I did make two minor changes to the policy, which I provide it to you via text, by a handout up there. The first change is to Section F. It just adds some language that was inadvertently amended to make the sentence read more clearly. And then the second change is to Section I, and it just is adding clarity that any time an employee is on paid leave, their need for a release from a doctor to be reinstated to work is going to be governed by FMLA. So there are some, some circumstances in which a release wouldn't be needed, and so FMLA is gonna govern that.
There is a typo. I saw that, too. The last one be governed by the Code of Federal Regulations?
I can make that change.
Sounds good. That's just Scrivners. All right, excellent. Thank you. So this is making it official because...
It's making it official, and then this would also mean that it would become effective today.
Nice. Nice. Oh, just got a little, little chill. That's awesome.
This is huge.
Yeah, it is. It's really great. So comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
When I was telling a citizen about this, they were like, what? The county doesn't already have this in place. People were surprised, but I think this makes us much, much more competitive as an employer, and I think it's the right thing to do, especially for, we've, we've got county employees like Ms. Ridge, who's here, who've been with us for decades, and I think we need to acknowledge the work that our employees do. So this is one step we're doing.
Commissioner Jones? I agree with all of that. This is certainly a wonderful thing to be able to do for our employees, and I just wish we had done it a little sooner.
Yeah. This is great. Thank you for all the hard work to get us here. And E and Employee Services, thank you. I know that these kinds of things are not easy. They don't just happen, and, and I'm really proud that, that we're doing this. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
I think that we, actually, we're discussing this for like five months. This is not just...
Oh, yeah.
Didn't just fall out of the sky, so...
And I know you worked on it, too. I should have mentioned that.
No.
So thank you. Thanks to everyone. All right. With that, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2024-30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Next item, please. Another great thing.
Sorry, I need to take a deep breath here.
I know. That's good.
Move approval of Tandem Parental Support Agreement. Fund name, Self Insurance. Fund number, 4,700, in an amount of $60,000 annually.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have E joining us.
Yeah, so in conjunction with the parental leave policy, we would like to extend some additional support to parents to help them with their, their, their new person in their life. And so this is in agreement with a local organization, Tandem, that provides that parental support, and they're working with employers to get employees to transition back into the workplace by offering basically anything you can think of that would help a, a new parent. They are providing that, whether that be classes at their facility, or in-home support, or just even advocating on, on their behalf. And we talked about this at a meeting a few weeks ago also.
Really awesome. Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you so much for doing this. It's truly a wonderful thing. Having been the mother of a very colicky baby, I sure wish we had had this available way back then.
Commissioner Giffens?
I would have been first in line to use this when my boys were born. They were both emergency C-sections. When my second one was born, I had a toddler, and my husband was commuting out of town.
Wow, yeah.
And so I would have really appreciated having this kind of service. So I'm, I'm pleased that you've identified this and brought it for us.
Yeah, that's really good. And, and so this could be for somebody who has brought a child in, not just through the natural birth process, but also through adoption?
Absolutely, yeah. Fostering, adoption.
Perfect. That's great. Excellent. All right. Yeah, huge thank you. This is, this is what makes Monroe County great. So, thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Tandem Parental Support Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Very happy and proud.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ah, such a good thing. On top of the ambulance unveiling this morning, it's just... Good news after good news after good news. It's nice to have that. Next item, please.
Move approval of EGIS VLN USA Inc. For Right-of-Way Services For Eagleson Bridge Number 922. Fund name, Eagleson Bridge Number 922. Fund number, 8176, in an amount of $19,800.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Ridge here to tell us all about it.
Well, my stuff is not as exciting.
It is good. This is good.
So this is for right-of-way engineering services to begin right-of-way acquisition for the Eagleson Bridge 922.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, Ms. Major, already answered my question earlier.
No, I don't.
Right. So this is the bridge on the IU campus that is going to be put in our inventory.
Correct. So we actually, there was, this bridge has been owned by IU for many years. It needed replaced for many years. We had to go through the steps to, we made, reached an agreement with NDOT. City of Bloomington is involved, of course, since it's their street. It was IU's bridge, and then we have a bridge inventory and do inspections. So it was agreed upon that NDOT would fund replacing that bridge. We would never accept that bridge in the condition that it was in. So they are working with us. They did the design at 100% at NDOT cost, which was just under $1 million at this point. The right-of-way services will be 80/20, and then going into construction, I believe it's in the fall of 2025 for a letting date, and then it would be 80/20 there. We had agreed to take, or I guess I agreed to take on that future expense in exchange. They had ended up funding the Cars Trail extension at 80/20, which was a $2.4 million on that project. So it was kind of a, you know, a need at the time for the Cars Trail. I think we only had $155,000 from the, through the MPO through that. So, so, yeah, we kind of made that deal going forward. It was just, it was good timing for, especially for, Monroe County came out ahead on that.
We, we certainly did, and I, this is, you know, don't ask a question unless you know the answer, but I didn't know part of the answer, so thank you for that. But this, this really exemplifies how wonderful you are at your job and your staff. You know all of the funding streams, what's coming, what's not there, what we need, and you make everything work and balance, and you bring, bring great projects into the county. So thank you. Really appreciate that. That's really awesome. All right, so my other question is, I would assume that this is gonna be like a spring, a post-graduation event to actually get this in 2026?
So if it goes to letting and fall, they will probably, so technically, a contractor wouldn't start until after April 1st. There's a lot of utilities. The railroad is involved, so there's a lot of moving parts to this project. But we also were working with IU on timing. Of course, it's gonna be a long project, so it'll be throughout the school year. But, yeah, we'll work our best with IU and the City of Bloomington to coordinate for, for that and IU's campus.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's, it's so busy there already. It's just, it's, uh, once the school year starts, it's hard to traverse campus if you're just trying to go from point A to point B. Thank you so much for your work on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving EGIS VLN USA Inc. For Right-of-Way Services For Eagleson Bridge 922 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item.
Yes, move approval of NDOT For Right-of-Way Services For Rockport Road Bridge Number 308. Fund name, Rockport Bridge Number 308. Fund number, 8166, in an amount of $33,680.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
This is also for a bridge replacement project. It's Rockport Road Bridge 308. We are moving into right-of-way acquisition for this. So this is the federal aid portion that is covered for reimbursement for that right-of-way acquisition.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens? No. All right. I don't have any questions either. I know the folks are going to be happy to get this project done, too. All right, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving NDOT For Right-of-Way Services For Rockport Road Bridge Number 308 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Motion carries three zero. And we do have one appointment we'd like to make today.
Yes. Unfortunately, the Parks and Recreation Board lost a longtime member, Phil Cornwell, recently. He had sent in his resignation in June, and unfortunately, he passed away recently. So I'd like to nominate Noel Conyers to be Mr. Cornwell's replacement. This is an appointment that will run through January 1 of 2027.
Second.
To the Parks and Recreation Board. Sorry.
We have a motion. We have a second, and our sympathies go to the Cornwell family. It was a longtime member of that
Oh, and always had something. Oh, he was just, I adored his spirit.
All right. All those in favor of approving Ms. Conyers' appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. So we do have some announcements. Just a reminder that folks can still report storm damage to IN.211.gov or could call 211 to report storm damage, but also that for now, the Bluestone Agreement will likely be more area-based rather than reporting-based. So we will ask folks to stop by the emergency management page. We do have to get appropriation first before they're going to continue working their contract. But really appreciate, I've just, I've just seen so many neighborhoods, really, where neighbors have stepped up to help one another, and it's, it's really what our community is all about. And feel badly for those who have had, suffered a lot of damage, but appreciate everybody stepping up and helping one another out. COVID testing is available at the, test kits are available at the Health Department, 119 West 7th, and also at the Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive, where you can also book an appointment for any vaccinations you may need. As always, we are accepting applications for boards and commissions, and right now, we're really looking for applicants to the Oh, my gosh.
RDC.
RDC, thank you. Redevelopment Commission. And that is an important task. You just have to be a resident of Monroe County. So we do ask you to go to CO.Monroe.in.us and fill in an application. But it's also a good time to look at the, all the boards and commissions, and go ahead and apply for something if you're interested. We do continue to have our office hours six times each month. You go to CO.Monroe.in.us, look at the calendar, and you will find six different meeting days and times where you can talk to one of us, offer your comments, concerns, anything. We'll talk about it. And the next blood drive, which is hosted by IV Tech at Shreve Hall, will be Wednesday, August 28, from 1 to 6, and Friday, August 29, 10 to 3. You may also go to redcross.org to make an appointment. We do encourage, because it is still storm season, folks to sign up for the Resident Alert Notification System. Click on the megaphone on our homepage, CO.Monroe.in.us. We have continued and increased the fund to provide more rural housing repair. For our residents and for homeowners who are in residence in their home outside the City of Bloomington, outside the town of Elletsville, please contact your township trustee. The exception is Perry Township residents who live outside the City of Bloomington are asked to contact us at our office. And I think Ms. Purdy wants to add something to us to that.
Yeah. The only thing I really want to add at this point in time is that based due to storms that we had, and then the technological issue that we had, I have not gotten to the applications received since about, I think it was June 27, the last Friday of, before all the world kind of blew up a little bit for me. So if you are waiting for a response, just hold tight. I'm working on those, and so hopefully, I'll get something available to everybody next week, because I anticipate I'll get everything to the Building Department by the end of this week, and then I'll hopefully hear from them next week. I did send emails to those that I could, and I've notified our trustees that had forwarded information just so that they could help their constituents know that they've not been blown up. It's just been something I haven't been able to get to, but I'm going to get to it.
And I just want to give another shout out to the Monroe County Fire Protection District. They brought their, the two new ambulances for a little show and tell. We've been cutting this morning at 9:30, and we're just so impressed with the professionalism of Chief Dillard's Fire District. It is really something to see the plans and dreams actually come to fruition, and what a great service to Monroe County. So thank you to my colleagues. Thank you to the council. Thank you to everyone on staff, and the Auditor's Office, Ms. Purdy, everybody who helped make this happen, too. And they really had the brunt of the work. And it is, it's really exciting to have these two new ambulances out, out in the field. So huge thank you to them again. Now, we do have a, do we have anything else for, to go to the order?
I was going to say that in addition to the RDC, we have this newly established opioid settlement appropriation board
Ah, yes.
That we are going to need some folks to come on board really quickly.
Okay.
I will check to see if we've had any applications. I know I've reached out to a few people. I also just wanted to say thank you also to the Fire Protection District. They had two runs already yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
And what folks don't
Their first day.
Yeah, their first day. What folks don't understand in that is that the Fire District, over half of their callouts are for medical issues. And so this is a critical addition, I think, to what's, what's happened here. And I applaud
Life-saving. This is about life-saving.
It is.
Great. We do have a work session. Would you like to just come back at 11 for that?
Sure.
Eight minutes? Okay. Great. We will come back at 11 for our work session, and until then, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. July 17, 2024. We have two planning items on our agenda for the work session, and I believe Mr. Cockrell has something as well that he's going to bring to us. And so we'll begin with Daniel Brown, ordinance 2024-25.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. So this is a rezone request that was recently to its final hearing at the Plan Commission. This is for two parcels of at 5991 West State Road 48. And the request is for a rezoned from a state residential one to limited business with the purpose of establishing a convenience store with, along with fuel sales, so essentially a gas station. Should the rezone be approved by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, the petitioner intends to file a commercial site plan to be reviewed administratively by the Planning Department? If denied, the property will remain our state residential one, where the use of convenience store is not permitted. The next step will be, again, for a full site plan review. So the property is located at the corner of West State Road 48 and Kirby Road. There is a water feature at the center of the property, and it's located in a critical drainage area. These are the definitions for the affected districts. Would the Board of Commissioners like for me to read them?
No. We're good on these definitions. Thank you.
So again, here's the location map. Again, this property is at the corner of State Road 48 and Kirby Road. It's currently zoned as state residential. Jason zoning is also state residential one, while other nearby areas include a planned unit development, limited industrial, airports, and agriculture rural reserve. The site is currently vacant. So it is along a major arterial road as well as a major collector road. Slops are mostly under 15% buildable area. This was approved, this was seen at the commissioners before the 25% slopes has taken place, was effective to take place by the state. There is a marked area as a water feature near the center of the property, which is this blue outline here, if you can see my mouse. And here are just some images of the property. Here's aerial Here's aerial pictometry. On the ground. I apologize for how long this is taking to load.
Not your fault. It's okay.
Yeah, there is seems to be a drainage ditch on the west side of the property along South Kirby Road. So it is located in the MCUA suburban residential designation of the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan. There is some comprehensive plan discussion with the Board of Commissioners, like me to go over it?
Do you want him to go over?
I need to read through the whole thing.
Okay. I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And here are the various findings of factual fact for the rezon, including discussions about the comprehensive plan, the current character of its current structures, the most desirable use change conservation of the property, reasonable development and growth. And so in broad summary, once again, this is a rezon request for two parcels totaling 2.48 acres in the Van Buren Township, 50 5991 West State Road 45. The petition site is zoned as state residential one currently, but the petitioner is requesting a rezon to limited business for the purposes of establishing a convenience store that also sells gasoline. A written commitment was suggested during the Plan Commission meeting to potentially exclude the two uses, those being both storage and convenience storage. That is under review and undergoing edits and will be included in the packet for the county commissioner's formal session. And yes, does do the Board of Commissioners have any questions?
All right. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Not today. I'm sure I have. And I haven't got I like, you know, I like to go out and look at the property myself. I haven't had a chance to do that. So I'm sure I'll have questions once we review this formally.
So this has not yet been to the Drainage Board?
I believe it has been to the Drainage Board. I think Kelsey might be able to answer any questions on that. I can also meet with her and get those comments in the formal packet as well.
Yeah, I would be curious about those comments. Must have been a meeting I wasn't able to get to or something.
So what I'll add on this is a couple of things. So this is an area near the airport that we've been told by Mr. Laverty and airport officials over the years is should not be residential. So there's our first, right? That's the first thing is it because it is on the flight path. The other thing is we had some discussion at our meeting about over the course of many meetings about this sort of being a bit of a gateway into Monroe County for those coming from the West. And that's why there's this request to have a written commitment to not include both storage or convenience storage, because that's really not what we want folks to see when they're coming in. Now granted, there's, you know, gas station convenience store, you know, just down the road at Curry and and but and West Third, but but still it's that's that's why that was that was placed on the table and they're and they're fine with that. But they do have something to note is that they do have the opportunity if they don't do a gas station convenience store to do anything else on the list in that district. So I would just ask my colleagues to look at that list and make sure that they're okay with everything else that's on that list. So and we can always send Mr. Brown any questions that we have. I don't know what our meeting schedule is in terms of when we are and aren't meeting next, but I mean typically it's every Wednesday, but do you would you like to have this on the agenda for the 24th or the 31st?
I agree.
Yeah, okay, great. So we'll take this on the agenda July 31st if the petitioner is willing and it works for you and staff as well. So just let us know if that doesn't, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Let me go back to my just little map on next item, Mr. Myers, although I think he's on vacation this week, Ordinance 2024-29, State Road 45 Convenience Mart Rezone.
Can you hear me all right?
Oh, you're not on vacation. There you are. I hear you, but I don't see you.
Okay. Can you see me now? It looks like my camera is working on my end.
Yay. Hello. Thank you.
Sure. So let me share my window here. Okay, this is REZ-24-2. The State Road 45 Convenience Mart Rezone is located at 4646 West State Road 45. It's 4.1 acres and it's split zoned general business and limited business. It's in Van Buren Township, Section 14. It's unplatted and it's in the Mokua mixed use comprehensive plan designation. All right. So the property owner is seeking a rezon of this property from the split zoning of limited business and general business to solely general business for the entirety of the property. And the purpose of that is to establish a gas station and convenience store, an arcade slash entertainment center, and an office on the same property. Now, this combination of uses classifies as a commercial slash industrial adaptive reuse land use classification. And that is only permitted in the general business district. So having all three uses on one site, the whole site must be general business. You can't have a portion of it be limited business in order to utilize this multi-use land use classification. Should the reason be approved, the petitioner intends to file a commercial site plan to be reviewed administratively by the planning department. And if denied, the property would remain split zoned limited business and general business where the mixed use category of commercial slash industrial after reuse is not permitted. I will state that convenience store, which does incorporate the sale of gasoline, so gas station convenience store is pretty much the same land use classification, that is permitted in the general business zone. And the portion of the site that the property owner wants to have general business or have the gas station in is already zoned general business. So by rights, they can put a gas station and convenience store on the property where they're wanting to locate it. It's just this combination of uses that requires the rezon to solely general business across the whole site. All right. So there are a number of existing structures on the property and that's where the commercial industrial adaptive reuse comes in. There's an existing structure that will be converted into the entertainment center or arcade. And that is classified under the zoning ordinance as park and recreational services. And then there's also an existing old limestone home on the property that is vacant and they are proposing to change that into an office space. So having that as well as the park and recreation services, as I stated, that's part of where we get the commercial industrial adaptive reuse. On the screen here, I have the definitions of each of these uses that are at play as well as the definitions of limited business district and the general business district. Here's the location map. It's at the corner of West State Road 45 and West Airport Road. Here we have the zoning map. And you'll see several different zoning districts around the property. The dark red is the general business and the light pink is the limited business. Site conditions. There are multiple driveway cuts off the that access the property and there are two off of West State Road 45 and one off of West Airport Road. So during the commercial site plan process, the highway department will have their own review steps and comment on the locations of those existing cuts. Might recommend moving some of them or eliminating some depending on the conditions of the review. There is what looks like a apparent single structure feature, I should say, on the property in the northwest corner. So that will need to be buffered with single conservancy areas and or cars conservancy areas per the stormwater ordinance. As I stated, the site does contain an existing 3,200 square foot commercial building. That's where the arcade and entertainment center will be. And then there's also an existing 1,600 square foot vacant residential building here. All the other structures that you see on the site, these this is a previously unpermitted use of the property by the previous owner where they were selling mini barns on the site. Those have since been moved. They're no longer on this petition site. And then this section here, this is just, I think this aerial is from 2022. So this stuff here on the screen on the site is not there either. And we'll see that here on this updated aerial imagery from 2024. Reduction of items stored here. And then here's that mini barn sale area that I was speaking on. And then here's some site photos. This is the existing home. So scroll through these. Those structures in the background there are not on the petition site. Another picture of the existing vacant home. And in the background here of this picture, you can see the existing commercial building that will be converted into the arcade slash entertainment center. Okay, we have the comprehensive plan discussion here. You've seen this format. The green is what falls in line with the rezon and the comprehensive plan designation. And then anything in gray is something that's out of line with the proposal with respect to the comprehensive plan. So I won't go into a lot of detail here because it's all in the packet for your review. I included this section about the county development ordinance because we're getting closer to, you know, getting those on into public forums and public meetings. So the draft zoning map for this property specifically has it transitioning into the general business district on its own. So if it were not to be rezoned, the property owner would not be able to operate the commercial industrial adaptive reuse classification because of the, you know, split zoning of limited business and general business. But if they were to wait until the CDO came into effect, the CDO will blanket rezon the property to general business zone anyways. So they're just trying to get ahead. They're trying to get some of their projects moving, hence the rezon request before you. But I thought it was important to identify where the CDO was leading this property anyways. Findings of fact, you can review those, they're in the packet. Letter from the petitioner to the Plan Commission is here. And then here we have a conceptual site plan. This is just a draft. It's just an idea. Here's the proposed gas station and convenience store. They proposed arcade inside the existing structure and then the proposed office in the vacant home. And then we had letters, some letters of opposition come in that were expressed at the Plan Commission meeting. Some neighbors in the area were concerned about the use of the property and those letters are included here in the packet. Okay, that brings me to the end of this presentation and the I'll go ahead and touch on what the Plan Commission voted on. They voted eight to zero to forward this on with a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners with no conditions of approval. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just need to read through the stuff in detail. It's hard when we get these things on Tuesday to have it ready for 10 a.m. the next morning.
Certainly not planning departments. No. It's just the way the packets run. And of course, we have other things on Wednesday that always come up. But I this is you're gonna don't fall off your chairs. This is a Plan Commission meeting I missed. I know. I know. I know. So I went back and watched it. So I I have questions I'm sending to Kelsey about this, having seen this now. But I think I think the important point here is that that it's important to note that neighbors are opposed to having a gas station here, but it is already permitted on this property how it's owned now. So that's the difficult thing. It just didn't happen to be a gas station before this. So that's that's the that's the unfortunate thing for those folks who are opposed who live in that area. But anyway, any anything else? We can always send him questions. When do we want to hear this?
Two weeks out also. Does that work for you for the 31st?
The 31st, Wednesday, the 31st?
I guess, yeah. I mean, I remember when this property was Army Surplus facility.
Yeah, if we can do the 31st, if the petitioner is agreeable, if it works with your schedule and staff, then let's go ahead and do that. Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, Mr. Cockrell had something for us? Yes?
Yes, I do. Sorry.
Just logging in.
I think you're aware of the fact that the Attorney General filed a lawsuit against our sheriff and it dealt with two provisions of the Indiana code that had been recently changed to allow the Attorney General to to enjoy and behavior based upon that. And they really deal with cooperation with the federal government and their ICE programs. So the sheriff has a couple policies that they feel do not comply with that. I think one of the thing and I don't want to get into the history or anything like that, but but when we were researching kind of justifications for that, we came across a case that was dealt with Gary, Indiana, and it was argued by the Georgetown Georgetown University and Washington DC's Institute for Constitutional Advocacy and Protection. The issues were very similar to what we expect in this case. They had one on the at the Court of Appeal stage, but at the Supreme Court stage, they said it's that the people whose suit had lacked standing. So that's 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 out. We reached out to Georgetown University and worked with our Sheriff's Department and that that Institute for Constitutional Advocacy and Protection is willing to represent the Sheriff's Department in this case. I have an executive session. We have an executive session on Tuesday with the county council that I was going to kind of mention this, but I just kind of want to make you and the public aware that we are aware, yes, we did get we did get a lawsuit and yes, we are we are going to defend that and we're actually utilizing a group that has successfully argued these cases in an Indiana court.
Awesome. Thank you. Really good. Anything else? Great. Thank you so much. We are adjourned.